Uh, deal with the blowers.
Right. So besides incentives, there is another, Ash and I were discussing prohibiting certain types on the basis of nuisance and noise. And that's more it'd be viable way to to go, do you think in terms of litigation? Yeah, that's something we would.
If if there is a phenomenon like one of these, which just happens to be different from gas power versus electric, but with a legitimate basis for not wanting X level of noise, the fact that that falls more heavily on gas power blowers is just their lookout. So yes, I think that would be okay.
Okay. I mean, it does. It does seem to be the case that they, I can't remember what it is. 10 decibels, which is, you know, 10 orders, maybe, you know, because it's lower than that. So they make a lot more noise. In other words, a lot, a lot of noise. And of course, they produce a lot of emissions as well. So the leak blowers are problematic. We were hoping then to phase out the lawnmowers and so forth. Those don't seem to be as prominent, you know, problem in terms of noise. So that would be, I think, problematic. I mean, I don't, I don't know if anybody here knows on the basis of data, like comparatively electric, I mean, let's use, let's increase this noise. But it's really a lot of noise here with these leak blowers in the state of mower, in a gas power mower. So any feelings about that? Like, I mean, are we within range of prohibiting mowers on the basis of noise? Or do you think that that is, uh, that's something you provide research? We have to do more research in terms of.
Yeah, I need to know whether they, I mean.
But we took away his festival, those, right? You know, noise every now and then some years ago. We used to have. Now it's just sort of, you know, it's my judgment, my discretion.
Right.
You can say that's making.
It's a reasonable person's standard.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Do you think that would be challenged?
If we.
If we, if we had mowers as well as leak blowers and so they're prohibited on the basis of noise. And do you think that that would fall under the reasonable standard of noise?
I think if if we had a lot of complaints about the noise in the mowers.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be a stronger case than if we don't. And I thought I heard you, I mean, this heard you, but I thought. Lower than leak blowers.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know that there's, uh, you know, that we, we have the record for enforcing our current noise ordinance against gas powered mowers. I've just never heard any of Larry's status before. So.
Yeah.
I mean, anything that we do under the noise, it is going to be judged by that standard of reasonableness. And that's going to require that we have, you know, a a problem that is broad enough that we can point to a significant number of people dealing with it.
I don't know. There are people in the community have reached out and it is about the blowers. I don't mean the hottest conversation. So if other people want to jump in. Anybody have any questions or comments? For Beth? Yeah, Matt.
Uh, thank you, Beth, for joining and and for sharing some of your thoughts on this. Uh, in addition to noise pollution, does it, does any form of local air pollution, I'm not talking about greenhouse gas emissions, but local air pollution potentially fall under, um, the purview of city regulation? In particular, I'm thinking of analogies to, uh, smoke, um, secondhand smoke. Uh, and our ability, I guess, to to regulate that at some level.
I think I need to look at this a little more before I answer that with confidence. But I, I believe that our ability as local government to regulate things that would otherwise fall within, say, Clean Air Act standards is fairly limited. Um, and I know Ash has done this work on this too, uh, but, uh, you know, basically, if you're, if you're going to follow what California does, we have some ability to follow their standards because the federal government has granted California through the federal regulatory process, a waiver of, um, the usual requirement that you can't step out of bounds of federal standards if you're a state. Uh, and then it's allowed others to to join that. But I really don't know whether that, I don't know enough about those standards to know whether that would solve this problem. Uh, and whether I need to nail that to more, just in my understanding of whether that gives us a whole lot of uh, opportunity here. Um, and whether, for example, uh, the state of Indiana would have anything to say about that, too. So, uh, I'm not overly hopeful. I think smoke, secondary smoke. And again, I'm just guessing here, but I think that some of the ability to regulate that is not necessarily a, uh, local power per se. Or if it is, it's recognized already as part of the regulation of tobacco and its sort of full impacts. That kind of filters down from the federal level. Uh, in other words, I think we've been, if we've gotten the power to do that, everyone's smile on it from the feds on down. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, I, I have a question. When we got rid of the decibels, why do we have to get rid of the decibels? And could we, could we craft something that says in ordinance, it says gas powered two cycle and decibels of over such and such, uh, a level? Or will that still run follow this whole? Yeah.
I, I wouldn't have gas powered in there. I think if you're setting the decibel level, you can set the decibel level and then whatever needs it, needs it. But I think if you add gas power in there, then it's going to, again, putting aside the law, I'm not very lawyer, as of tonight, uh, the construction material limitation. But if we were to face a um, a provision that covers, uh, these sorts of machines, then, uh, it would be seen, I think, once we use that term as our focusing on the energy.
Okay, so, so is there any reason why we can't say decibels?
Um, I am not sure I know why those were removed earlier. I don't know if that was just. Uh, I'll tell you why it might have been. Uh, and you guys have a little bit longer history with all this than I do, but, um. When you write a very specific standard into an ordinance, you either have to keep that up or you default to what is often the case in law, which is you have a standard of reasonableness that can itself evolve depending on how the community and the situation evolves. And so it's a little bit less unwieldy to have something you don't have to keep amending. Because if you find out 10 decibel or whatever you were setting as is not right, then you have to keep going back into the statute, continuing with that. So I don't know if that was the issue. I don't know if it was a difficulty of measurement.
So that presents a problem in the evolution if it's, if you're just saying X decibels?
It kind of depends on the individual case about whether like that's a standard that you feel pretty confident saying, you know, that this level of noise is a problem, people don't like it. And we're just going to set this and, you know, if it doesn't work, if it captures things that we worry, you know, there are unintended consequences. Now the mower is involved and people are in arms about that.
Yeah.
Well, it is, but that's the danger of the specifics.
I guess, I guess it's broader not to actually get us into trouble anyway.
Yeah, okay. As I recall, this is what you remember, you, we were, it was during the food, uh, truck debate.
Yeah.
Yeah, we was coming and saying, well, we have this decimal meter, but, but it's really, it's unreliable and we really don't want, you know, do we take the measurement at 25 feet or 50 feet or, you know, there was all this sort of back and forth about, you know, what, what standard are we after? And then I think the lawyers basically said, oh, we could just set a standard of reasonableness. So why don't we just do that?
Yeah.
In that way, but it is arbitrary, right? It's like, who's reasonable?
It's not arbitrary. That's a bad word in the lot, Dave.
Okay.
It's not arbitrary. Um, a reasonable standard is based on this sort of construct of a reasonable person in law, which is supposed to be a consensus of the community standard. So.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I think that, um, we don't currently have any measurement tools, right?
No.
We discussed this with another.
And he was sitting in a closet somewhere. No, we, we still have them. Yeah.
Sorry, I think, and Beth and I talked recently about how, um, it doesn't necessarily have to be a decibel thing, but I think you can still have a time of day restriction as long as it's not for the same type of people. Say these things allow have a time of day restriction in our product, have, have a seasonal restriction, um, all, uh, leak blowers. Doesn't matter how their power, all leak blowers will be used in whatever spring time, whatever fall time. Um, just the distinction between like fuel that powers and it's kind of what, what's, um, causing that risk.
Yeah.
So the, the loudness of it is within our purview, but under the standard of reasonableness, but also temporally, we could regulate things on the basis of time of day or season and things.
Yeah.
So, um, okay.
Um, Ash, can you walk us through the other, uh, legal references that are in our packet here?
Yes, I'll just briefly share that again. The federal consolidation for reach that. So this is from, uh, the best. Um, I think the most problematic language here was what I highlighted. No state or any political subdivision may adopt or attempt to enforce any standard, uh, applicable to spark ignition engines smaller than 50 horsepower. Um, I think that was interpreted and the EPA had their own standards that, um, regulations in Portland, that part and was several. So. The first part is about farm or construction equipment or vehicles, um, those get fined. Um, there's, there's a reaction about, you know, adopting standards or other requirements. Um, that's what the, those were standards or other requirements was, uh, interpreted in the federal case that I was reading. It's fairly confusing and convoluted. Um, but, uh, some of the, the most problematic languages is about, um, the, uh, scroll down. So the EPA believes that their, the states or localities are not perfunited, um, from regulations on our usage, usage, the kind of, um, use, uh, in use regulations, like in whole use operation or movement of off road equipment. The issue comes from, you know, station localities cannot set quantitative levels of emissions. So those best standards for ancillary enforcement mechanisms like certificates for inspections, those would be other requirements. That's kind of what I got from the case. Um, there is a process for California, um, as Beth alluded to, to adopt its own standards with permission of EPA and for states to opt into those California regulations. Um, I believe that is here procedures for California. California has to go through a criteria for getting authorization from the EPA to set emission standards. It's, um, pretty long, but states can opt into, um, this. I think the biggest issue here is states and localities other than the state of California may not adopt or set an important standard or other requirement, which is setting mission standards to work with very important mechanisms, um, trying to control emissions from the spark ignition engine stall of the store tower. I think that is what, um, uh, sparked the, um, complaint and litigation in Montclair, New Jersey case. So right now there is, uh, a federal lawsuit. Um, it's still litigation is ongoing, so there aren't any, um, final decisions at the moment. I believe, uh, the preliminary injunction was denied, but I have not been able to access, access the, um, the documents. Um, but basically there's a federal case, um, where, uh, a landscaping, uh, organization is suing alleging that this provision in the EPA and the, um, this regulation and the federal statute preempts, um, Montclair, New Jersey from, um, said their ordinance, uh, which is specific to emissions. I think a lot of, a lot of the research that, um, council staff have done about, uh, other municipalities and their, their legislation. A lot of legislation was focused and housed in the, uh, noise ordinances and nuisance areas of their code. And this in particular was, um, emissions. So I think, you know, there's, there's two aspects to prediction that, that I was thinking about. One is, um, the focus on emissions might bring some alarms when it comes to this federal issue. Um, if the focus is going to be attempting to, I mean, the biggest issue is attempting to regulate emissions. That's under the purview of the EPA. Um, or the second sub issue is of course the state statute that looked at, um, trying to regulate machines based on the type of energy that fuel machines. They're, they're kind of two separate issues. They seem to kind of go, who went in and you got two separate ends between federal and state. Um, so yeah, hopefully that was helpful. Uh, the federal, uh, case is much more confusing, but hopefully I explained that well.
What was the motivation on part of Montclair, New Jersey, carbon emissions? Or was it like fluids, like benzene? You know, some hydrocarbon.
Yeah.
Pollution that would be noxious for people who have compared breeding or something.
Yeah. So I think, and I'm trying to look for, I know that there, the Montclair, New Jersey, um, we have their, their ordinance.
So I've been rough in Jersey, driving past barrels of leaking stuff in the seventies or eighties. I'm gratified that Montclair is now origin of that.
Well, so, and that's at the Springport?
No.
Federal, oh.
It's, it's in the federal district court.
Total district court.
Relation.
Uh, okay.
It's not in the, somebody share.
The federal is contained Judy Hall.
One of the broader.
My mother is, is the rest, the restaurant names are doctor.
This is what a lawsuit is about.
Okay, so internal combustion.
Things local governments are, they're supposed to be a regular, you're right.
Well.
So they do make a distinction between gas.
Yeah.
That just, uh, I just saw a petition in there about muffler.
Yeah, I was feeling it's kind of like.
Muffler, uh, so if you're thinking about regulating in terms of noise, then that, if there are such things as properly functioning mufflers for gas powered leak blowers or any heavy floor that would hit the level that we would think is unreasonable. And that would be one way that they could continue to operate.
Right.
Which is not how we want them to fix.
Right, right. That's, yeah, that's, that's the issue. So what do we know about electric leak blowers, um, like commercial yard services adopting those and just probably cost benefits standpoint, going back to incentives, like not feasible with that.
Yeah, as I recall, the data in front of me, it was feasible because, um, well, you know, they, I think they, they, they tend toward the gas power types because of the, the power. But they're not so far aligned in terms of, you know, like it seemed to be comparative, yeah, comparable. The, the problem is lawn mowers, especially the large lawn mowers are problematic. They're not quite there in terms of battery power and that sort of thing with, uh.
And duration.
Yeah.
The batteries, they, they sign this.
Yeah. Um, there is a member of the public that can, um, his name, um, here.
Was it Hugh Crainer?
Hugh Crainer, um, and he did a lot of research and it turns out that, you know, these leak blowers are are noxious in terms of their emissions because they're, they're not being burning, they're two stroke, most of them. And so they're not efficiently burning the fuel, which is a gas oil mixture, I think. And you end up with a lot of pollution. They produce as much carbon emissions and much pollution as a car driving hundreds of miles comparatively. If you run the sink for half an hour and then he's particularly upset by the, by the noise because the, it's not only the decibel level, I think it's pitch. And that's something I'm curious about, too. Is the sound frequency something that we can regulate? Uh, or is it just decibels? Uh, or I guess, I guess, you know, under the proverb of reasonableness.
Yeah, I think it's broader language of. I think when we talked about this, I don't know if it was, if the conclusion was, it wouldn't conclude, I think frequency is probably, it's in the ordinance itself. And I think it's probably the most naturally read that way. It appears there as frequency meaning how often. But I don't know that it forecloses anything of more broad kind of impacts.
You're right. We were, we were trying to discern that. Is it talking about frequency of use or the actual frequency meaning?
Yeah.
The, uh, I can't remember. I didn't think about sound. But, but sound has low, low impact, you know, there's a range of frequencies.
Uh, I mean, I have an electric leak blower and it's really obnoxious and I don't use it very often, but it very, it's, I mean, it's obnoxious as a gas.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Really noisy, high pitched.
Oh, man. Nice, sir.
No problem. Thanks. I just wanted to follow up additionally about the some questions about related to noise, regulation of noise. Uh, just some Googling here. I mean, we've heard about, um, the, the blower differences in terms of decibel levels. And it seems like the same is true of mowers, actually, that like, you probably could define a decibel threshold that would, for the most part, exclude, uh, well, depending which threshold you're talking about. You could, you could set a threshold where gas powered mowers are on one side and electric mowers are on the other side, for the most part. Um, and the same is true of blowers. And I wonder about the, going back to decibel levels, I, I was, heard, heard the, you know, the background context about difficulty of measuring and verifying and how you implement that. But what if it is, what if a piece of equipment is categorically above a certain decibel level and you can, you know, if you can specify that decibel, decibel level in ordinance, like, do you have to verify that it is in fact above that level? Or is the fact that the equip, the equipment is tested and known to be above that level enough if you were able to set that threshold?
Do you mean that if the, like manufacturer specifications, in other words, or something like that reflect that something operates at X decibel level?
Yeah.
I mean, if that exists out there and it's reliable, I don't know why you couldn't say these things fall within a category we've, uh, we prohibited. And we know that they do because on the packaging or however, it's, you know, it'd have to be, again, quite liable, but otherwise it'd be arguing about it in, you know, how it's actually operated in practice.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, I, 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 we have to do additional research, I guess, to figure out if that's actually something that you could reliably verify based on like manufacturer specs, but like the general, uh, information that's available with quick searching seems to be that categorically, these are different across, uh, yeah, gas versus electric equipment, um, for both mowers and blowers.
So critical question there, I think, in order to avoid what you could well imagine would be the inevitable charge that the level was set artificially to get rid of something that we can't do directly on an indirect basis. The range of difference would have to be significant enough that you could say, yeah, that much noise is a problem. This is not. Okay, if they're very close, I think that's a risky business.
Yeah.
If we look at Princeton, New Jersey, where, you know, our staff never had a prolonged conversation uh, with the, the people involved there. And that's not being taken. I mean, Montclair's must be different in that Montclair, New Jersey is being contested, whereas the one in Princeton is not.
Right.
Yeah. It's in our packet from last time. And so there, they do emphasize noise. Of course, we're not in New Jersey, but still. It might be that that's a model to, that might work in Indiana as well. So it's, it's about the noise, but it's, okay, so it's, uh, the operation of any noise creating blower or power fan or any internal combustion engine. The operation at which causes noise due to the explosion of operating gases or fluids. Uh, unless it is adequately muffled muffler device. So that's not, are we?
Are you, oh, you have something else?
Yeah, I'm looking at the actual legislation. Sorry. Page thirty three of the packet from Monteleau town.
Something like, we go to noise, we, we, we weaken our argument against the, I mean, I, I know it's noisy and obnoxious, but we're really worried about the two stroke pollution, right? Yeah. So it's kind of like the end of the weekend in the argument. And then it, you know, it's kind of like, that's really a challenge.
I mean, but it may get some people to change their equipment in a different way, you know, who would make it, who base it on noise and they know that their equipment is not going to pass that test.
Well, somebody could, I think that one, that would have somebody then develop something that's gas that blows like crazy and has a.
I mean, you know. Well, that's it. But then if the, if the, you know, cost analysis is either I pay a hundred dollars for a machine for a muffler or I pay a hundred dollars extra when I replace this in order to make it an electric engine. It might work out that they'll just go electric again.
I think it kind, it depends on data. I don't know and don't have about.
Just theoretically.
But I mean, it may be, and it's worth, like, you know, we, we should talk maybe a little bit more about, maybe I'm being overly pessimistic about the state house. Maybe we just do it, say, this exemption in the, or this, you know, part of the home rule statute isn't talking about leak blowers. It's talking about cement mixers and it's talking about other stuff in home construction and dare someone to, to do what I suspect they're likely to do, which is go to the state house, but, um, but it provides platform to say, well, here's why we want to do this. And look at all these other communities who are, uh, who are doing this.
Like, you know. Do we, do we run a risk though of, if we fail with regulating on the basis of emissions? And then we come back and say, well, now we want to regulate them on the basis of noise. Is, is there, uh, is there a problem there that the court would consider that this is their, their, their intention is really about emissions. It's not about noise. And they proven it by going, but, you know.
Well, you could do, you could draft it with both from the outset in there.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we have to strike. One of the reasons we split up the elements, you know, and what is the way trying to do that with an incentive program?
Yeah, that's what, uh, I think, I mean, that mentioned earlier was, um, you know, if you, if you needed to try to get out of a different way to reduce the risk of rejection, because I think it's about, um, you know, not necessarily that you are or are not granted that there's a risk. Um, whether or not it's, you know, the, the statute actually applied or not, it's kind of fuzzy. Um, but, uh, you know, it may not be necessary with policy approach you are wanting, you may be able to get out of a different way. Maybe, I think what Beth said was grow up carrots. Um, you know, focus a lot on the incentive programs to get people to do this with your wanting while also maybe adding, you know, the, the, or, or, or amending the noise ordinance to reflect and what you were hoping to get out of the noise concerns. Um, uh, is about what page are you working at with, um, the, the, is that, sorry?
Page, it's page thirty three in the packet. Page, it's page thirty-three in the packet. Or it says noise is expressly prohibited, and then it talks about blowers trans. So here again, adequately muffled, you know, what is adequate? It doesn't talk about decimals.
But also, I mean, it says the operation of which causes noise due to the explosion of operating gases or fluids. And I guess my question would be, why is that there? Because is there something unique about that? Noise.
Like, look at their work, their assholes, and you see that they have, you know, environmental concerns.
Yeah, I mean, that's the.
Yeah, it's an ethical commission.
Just like a computer down there. Gas power, like.
Yeah.
That was a thing different.
Is the are the leaf blowers in town largely commercial or residential officially, you know, who's that we're dealing with? Or is that only most of the, it's both?
I think we've got complaints.
Hmm.
We went on the internet and found that there's about forty landscaping committees in the meeting.
I think there's a new grant money to get like federal or state or even nonprofit grant money to try to get some placement. You know, system is one of them.
Is there any discussion, has there been any discussion and investigation that, about providing such incentives? That you know of?
I don't know, but the Green Team hasn't been, yeah, Sean would be the right person.
Yeah. Do you have any discussion about that?
Well, Sustainable Princeton did receive grants. I wondered if any of them were federal. They raised twenty-one thousand dollars to provide a one thousand dollar reinforcement grants for companies for any electric equipment. It was just for company, not for residents. I'm going to think.
Good question, um.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about grants? Thanks. Um, have Sean, have you or has anyone been in touch with um, Duke Energy specifically about this and whether or not they would be interested in partnering to incentivize or otherwise this, this uh, sort of like off-road equipment fleet transition uh, in partnership, for instance, between the city and commercial landscaping entities or, or others? I know Jessica Davis had mentioned that uh, I U P U I was benefiting explicitly from Duke's fleet management program, which actually does include non-vehicle fleet.
I've not heard of anybody reaching out to Duke Energy, but um, I'd be willing to if that's something.
Okay. Yeah, we might, maybe it'd be worth one or two of the committee members and, and you having a conversation with them. Uh, I don't know if it'd be, um, is it uh, Liz, Liz Erwin, uh, the government relations person? Is that right? Am I remembering that name right? Yeah, uh, just double checking my email. But yeah, yeah, her or, or somebody else, uh, that could, you know, maybe who should refer us to the right person to talk with them about. I would think that the like residential incentives are probably something the city could handle or absorb, but it might be something more significant to the commercial scale that, that their partnership would be useful for.
I think some research for the previous meeting, two fifty, three hundred. A gas powered leaf blower that's anywhere between one twenty-five and four hundred and average is two sixty-three. A quarter to electric powered leaf blower averages about sixty-five. Battery powered leaf blower is one seventy-five. So it's about a hundred dollar difference between gas and battery power.
What if, does it say commercial? Um, I just enjoy a similar, you know, more powerful.
I think this was just an average.
Average, okay.
Oh, well, there's a range, there's a range there, so one twenty-five was the cheapest for a gas powered up to four hundred, so that might be the commercial. Same for battery powered, battery powered range was a hundred to fifty, with an average of one seventy-five.
Okay. There are other questions for Beth. Won't she soon?
Is this something that it would be worth uh, asking Aim about? Since Aim has lobbyists with the legislature and lawyers and they want.
We can, they can also work with by Creed Devault, who does our work on state house. So, yeah.
Get a sense of what they think of it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no worries.
What did you just aim at? Who else?
Uh, Creed Devault is the firm that the city uses with uh, Spicex State House. So, yeah, let me go ahead and send them to them. It's both of them, they can.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good idea. They have some ideas like, they'll do it this way or forget it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, maybe. They would be interested, I'm sure.
Yeah.
A lot of staff research, we came up with uh, a lot of progressive cities in other areas, but uh, none from Indiana. So this is kind of an analogy with us for the state.
I mean, I, I would be very interested to know what in twenty twenty-one prompted that, like, who was trying to get away from uh, gas powered equipment and motors, or not motors, but motors with.
And slow the answer.
Yeah. So, am I, do you know?
I, I think that all comes from, it, it was a probably Alec that was do, that was leading this charge. It, it's no, I don't think it was anybody in Indiana specifically, but they were seeing this happening around the country and they were beating us to it essentially. Uh, a number of coastal states, cities and coastal states in particular, were starting to move towards uh, ban, you know, electrification requirements, gas bans and new, new construction, that sort of thing. And all of the conservative legislatures in the country just like very quickly like pushed through these preemption uh, bills. So that's my understanding of the history of that.
Yeah. Yeah, I can imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're always out there with their model legislation shopping it around, so.
I just have that question. If we didn't go the route, um, where we tried to pass a resolution, how long would it take for the state to grant that?
Oh.
What's the timeframe though?
Well, that, yeah, I mean, they, they, their sessions are in the spring and every other session is either effectively three and a half or four months. Um, and uh, so depending on when we did it, it would take that long to get to the state house. And uh, once they're in session, you know, three months, if, if it literally didn't happen until we end of the session.
Yeah.
Um, and then they, oftentimes, I mean, their legislation takes effect immediately. I mean, the most three point phrase in Indiana state law is an emergency is declared for this act and therefore
Really?
takes effect. I mean, yes, it's always an emergency.
Very.
Um, so uh, so yeah, I mean, we, you know. I mean, it's, it's conceivable something else would, again, maybe I shouldn't be overly pessimistic. Maybe other things will take up their time and energy and then it will be, you know, as big a reaction to our doing this. But I know from what Ash has done, a lot of research and uh, sounds like there's an active professional association presence out there trying to, to give these issues a pushback when it comes to, you know, and so I like what Matt was referring to. The American Legislative Exchange uh, is, uh, they're just a producer of model legislation and then they go around and to target state legislatures to dot. So, it's hard to say, I mean, honestly, but um, I just don't love our chances, only because you watch one thing after another with local governments trying to enact progressive legislation and the state house kills it. So, okay, but it's good to you.
My biggest thing is, you know, even, even if it's home construction in the title, the text itself within that statute doesn't say anything about construction in that section. And so it's, it's it's up to interpretation. So I think it, it, it depends on, you know, if someone wants to litigate it, if you go to a court, a court would use regular rules of statutory interpretation, which is look at the text first, look at the plain reading. If it's, if the plain reading is, you know, unnot ambiguous, it stands, of course, we couldn't find a definition of machine in that, so we don't really know exactly what that would be. Um, but so it, it really all depends on if someone wants to challenge this, they could find a way to challenge it by looking at these areas.
I think that's right. I mean, you know, statutory construction plays up a great point. I mean, basically what courts do is when they think a heading of a law supports where it are otherwise headed, then the heading would be meaningful. And when it's incomplete, they'll say headings are not, and daytime outward of this is the text in the statute. So, yeah.
Then the clean water act, it really doesn't have anything to do with running water.
So it's just that it's about risk assessment. I have, I drafted in the um, that you wanted to say or not, but I, I drafted a sample of legislation um, based on what you all, that the committee were asking for last time. Um, and of course, it's still in a very rough skeletal uh, stage. But um, of course, if you want me to, if you want council staff to, we can draft something else that, that is about noise concerns, compare and contrast what you all want. You can workshop either, you can workshop both, figure out what you want to do. Um, but I, I did put that in, in the packet where you also look at. Um, it's basically kind of going through other concerns that you all wanted to highlight in possible uh, legislation.
I mean, my feeling right now is that it would be um, we, we'd probably be better off going the sound route. Um, if we, if we want to implement something and not have it installed and potentially defeat it, I mean, go back.
Yeah, right.
Um, so I'm just curious, Beth, if you could find out if we were to specify sound as the reasonableness standard, the way we want to go? Or is it? I, you know, I, I think as Matt was talking about, like, measuring it. I mean, you know, so decibel levels between the, the electric and the, and the gas car are, are just Googling it is like ten times louder.
Yeah.
So it seems pretty much anybody who was objective would say that thing is a lot louder than that. So I think that that would stand to be upheld, I would think, if enforceable. Um, and I would assume this would be probably a police action. Is that your feeling or would there be neighborhood resource officers or something like that who would?
I mean, who?
Could be employed.
Who uses it?
Yeah, who would enforce it? Do you, do you have?
Uh. Yeah, I mean, in terms of code enforcement right now, the noise ordinance is enforced by the police, right?
Police, right.
So. Um, so that it doesn't necessarily have to be that way. You could, you know, authorize other folks like public works personnel or, you know, I, uh, in, in terms of, I, I would say the neighborhood folks, that's where you're on a complaint driven process, right? So, you know, reporting, then it's who in the city would respond to that. Um, one thing just before I forget it, uh, to keep an, an eye on, because again, I'm looking at the data, but uh, if gas powered leaf blowers are so much more powerful than electric ones, I'm not saying they are, but if they are, and therefore their use is much shorter than electric. And I think that is something you want to take into account in terms of the impact. Now, maybe that the electric ones are so quiet and you can use them all day and it would never bother you in light of the noise standpoint. But that, these are the kinds of things that, you know, I think if, if someone were to uh, challenge the noise as a basis for regulation, it'd be looking at, is there a measurable significant difference? So you want to think about everything, not just the decibel level, like how long are you operating at a decibel? Kind of like, where, where are you operating at?
Good.
So.
Right, there's a lot to consider. I mean, I remember this debate coming up about the measuring it on the basis of somebody's decibel reader and sound decays in the, it's, it follows the inverse square law, which is to say that each time you double the distance, the intensity is cut by a factor of four. So the question was, well, how far away from this generator that the food truck is deploying? Or is the measurement speed, et cetera, then you get into this, wow, you know, actually going out with the air stick or whatever, the tape measure. Instead of just, but if you think it would fall under reasonableness, that you know, is, I mean, I guess you'd have to look at case law to determine if that it would.
Well, and, and, and I think data on impact, right? Because for, for the current noise ordinance, if I were going to enforce it, I'd be saying um, what is the evidence of harm? The way that I, I think of the force side show, I can hear that. Um, but it basically talks about a reasonable interfering with the kind of health, safety piece, et cetera, of people. So then you're saying, what is the what are the indicator that we're at that point? Like, um, and, and how much of it is there? Because it can't be one person, it's got to be enough people that you've reached a level of commonality or instrument that you can say the reasonable person, which is a construct based on, you can, you can assess this, um, that that's been triggered. So now that's different from saying, as Matt, I think you were saying before, if we know that, that there's X level that is harmful, right? That like, we're, because we can't, I mean, the council can't do things that are arbitrary or egregious. That's why arbitraryness is not responsible. Um, and to be non arbitrary, it has to be a level that is problematic, uh, in some way it's harmful. But if there is that level, um, and it gets set and it sort of happens that electric leaf blowers don't hit that level, then you could have an actual number, some sort of whatever the measure is.
Yeah, so then, you know, you get, so for instance, it could be, the, the, the range could be seventy-five decibels to ninety-five. And, and damage securing occurs at over seventy-five. But the problem is, well, how far are you away from the leaf blower? Right? So you're not, you know, I mean, the next yard, that thing is ninety-five for the user, but it's for me and it's sixty-five, but it's still annoying. I mean, it's a nuisance. So, th- this is the nuisance.
Yeah.
I- i- is this part of the reasonableness?
Well.
Is the, is the level nuisance? Because this is what motivates most people. Is to say, it's not going to kill me, but I can't stand.
It's annoying.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think the idea again is like the comfort of repose is here in the statute. Um, so I think that, that, you know, it's about capturing the circumstances in which that interference is presented. And so like, if we lived in a world in which we knew that leaf blowers were only used on people's, you know, residences and everyone was out between nine and five somewhere else for work. I think you'd have a hard time showing that as a reason people would use a leaf blower to blow away. You start at times, no one's going to hear it, as long as the people who are doing it have safety equipment on. Um, you know, but we don't live in that world. So then it's a question of trying to figure out what are the conditions in which, you know, like if I live in Mountain County and my nearest neighbor is five miles away, you know.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it doesn't make a difference, right? Uh, from a noise standpoint. Um, so it's still a way for the emissions to, that's another beast. So I, I don't say this to be discouraging about trying to figure out what that sweet spot is. I just think that that's how you want to think about it is you want to keep an eye on, what is it that is creating the harm that allows the council to go in and.
Yeah, so, yeah. Okay.
Well, there, in the current noise ordinance, there is language about beyond the property line. Like if something can be heard beyond the property line, so. I mean, that seems reasonable to me, like if it's seventy-five decibels, I'm sitting, you know, five feet away from my property line, this person is blowing leaves at ten P M or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, so we, we already have existing.
Yeah, I'll go back to the test, but yeah.
Perception, physical uh, ramifications of where the perception of that sound is, right? I'm not expressing that very well.
Well, no, but the, the more, I mean, if you, if what you do just lands within the four corners of your property, then you're not harmed, right? It's the fact that it moves off your property that is implicating others. Yeah. Yeah.
Any more questions or comments, Matt? Yeah.
All right, I'll go send a note to Aim and, and Creed, let's find out in that front.
Thank you.
I suspect Adam Hinton is leading the way on this side. I suspect Adam B. Chen is lea- leading the way on this. I don't know how many other Indiana people are. Taking the plunge, but you never know.
We might aspire others.
Well, that's it.
Yeah, that's.
That's what they don't want. Do we have, I mean, here's like other key question, are there any Indiana manufacturers of gas powered leaf blowers? Do we have an industry here, uh, in either direction, by the way, are there a market?
Yeah. And we want the big point to inquire, that's good to know, though. Thanks so much, Beth. And and will they make a really good uh muffler to squash our efforts? I would say yes. Uh, what's what what are people's feelings about what part they go?
I just looked at average decimals for each, so the leaf blower, the gas is between eighty to ninety. Battery is sixty five to seventy, so that's a significant range. And then for the lawnmower, the gas is um eighty five to ninety five. Electric is around seventy five, so again, it's. I think we have.
Lawnmower is what again?
The gas is ninety five, eighty five to ninety five, and the electric is around seventy five. So I think.
So it's comparable, and that's a ten fold difference? Intend- well, ten decimals is a ten fold difference, so. Um, so it might work for lawn mowers as well, but. How much people feeling about, what they're seeing with this? They could already mentioned that I I'm favorable to the sound enforcement.
I think I would like to explore that. I I think our noise ordinance. Uh, it's problematic already, the way it is, I mean. You know, it's totally complaint based, it's whatever somebody thinks is reasonable, somebody else thinks is unreasonable, so. But it seems like the best route we have at this point. And I, I guess I I'll wait to see what um Aim or or Creed to vote say, but. I would be inclined to put in both the noise uh as a as a reasonable rationale and. The pollution or health impacts, and then if one of those is struck, then we. Think the noise is our rationale.
Okay.
But we could wait and see what Beth can find out.
Yeah, and then you go on, I I just think, well, unless we just go forward and do it. We'll never find out if we can do it, so so if they slap us down, they do.
Then we still have the noise as a rationale and the ordinance.
We still have, yeah.
It's better to put it in first, like, I think.
That's consultant lawyers, what do you think? And Matt? Think uh including both?
Um, I think generally when it comes to, when you have stuff that you've done of things like this. Um, crafting something that's going to work and last and be. A better work sustainable, then it's it's our preference. Um, you know, it might take more time to to tweak it. I think the issue of granting it is not something that is scary as much as, you know. It it's good that we found this out before we got it all the way to council, and then someone came up during public comment and said, you're preempted. You know, so so trying to get this workable and and within the boundaries of what the law allows is, you know, probably from from our standpoint. Then be, you know, the the easiest to work with.
Does it, would would the ordinance be? Housed in two different um places within?
Well.
Or or the or code?
What do you mean?
Noise noise be different, but would noise be separate? As opposed to the emissions?
Well, it is.
Where it's housed?
I think I think, okay, I think I understand your question. If it goes to something that Isabel was mentioning, um, amending the noise ordinance in itself. That would be an amendment of Title fourteen, um, so it would be within Title fourteen, um. Uh, if if you wanted to just do um the the looking at the draft. Uh, legislation that I made, um, I think I suggested that would go into something like Title six. Um, so it depends on what route you wanted to take, uh, if you wanted to take the uh health and safety routes. Or if you wanted to take the noise route, um, I think one presents more risk than the other, but of course, anything.
Well, we were thinking do both.
What do you mean by do both?
Well, as Isabel said. Have the have these regulate them on the basis of. Sorry, um, it turned out the sound like. Yeah, does that make sense to you in a legal sense?
To try to.
Just in other words. Yeah.
Would be both, that we're trying to mitigate the hel- negative health impact, the pollution and the. Oh, and noise, I guess, pollution and noise, both could be have health impact, so we could put it in Title six. So, yeah, I believe.
Yeah, I think that decision um makes sense, uh, in looking at something like uh Princeton. Um, they have it within their voice version, so a lot of their rare ass causes have to have mentioned help. Um, so I think, you know, where it goes, um, might not necessarily be dictated by. Uh, the rationale, um, it unless, I I think it where it goes is kind of the last step in terms of where you wanted to. To to really, um, uh. Though I think, um, if you wanted to focus on noise as the legal rationale, it would be within Title fourteen. But your rare ass causes can still have a plethora of these cause, health issues, these cause, and these issues, these um, a bunch of other issues. Um, doesn't necessarily dictate that, you know, the the code section has to be in a different area, um.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess I would lean towards Title fourteen then, since it seems legally safer to put there.
Yes, yeah, I I don't know if I have a really. Good opinion, I'm not really sure. I guess it might, I I think, try and one or both, who do put it in one section to the title or the other and. Go for it, let's just see what happens.
If you put in the in health and safety under Title fourteen, you're gonna talk about emissions. And then with the state, and then say, no, you can't do that, they're gonna preempt what you're trying to change. Because you've specified internal combustion engines and emissions from.
So I think that's, that that was my, yeah, I was thinking we would use. The emissions argument and the noise argument.
That we would or wouldn't?
I was thinking we would try to use both.
That's what I thought, and I and I was trying to picture how this looks, and I don't know, with essentially lists that, you know. The these type of equipment are 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 going to be phased out on basis of. X, Y, Z, that it produces, you know, C O two, it produces benzene. It makes too much, it it damages, it's a it's a nuisance, all of that, it's about all listed. And then when you take it, when you litigate it, they say, well, you can't, you can't ban them on this basis, so you have to strike this. And this, but you can keep this, is that, is that how it works? Is that what you mean?
All right, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, but I'm a little confused.
Well, I'm just. I I mean, any jeopardy, including uh what, you know, doing with the Isabel I gave. Go ahead, Matt, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I I. I don't have a firm answer, my my hunch would be, um, as long as you have a legal basis, you have a legal basis. And it doesn't matter, um, if you've also stated reasons for doing something that are not your legal basis, if you have the authority. And you do it properly under noise, then you're good. But. I, that doesn't necessarily mean it's the best approach to list every every reason why you want to do something. I I'd be curious to hear feedback. Based on uh Beth Kate's outreach that she just said she was going to do. Personally, I don't, I, you know, it's in our climate action plan, uh, we can talk to constituents about the variety of reasons why. Transition to electrification is better, I don't feel a need necessarily to include it in. The legislation or city code itself, if noise is the basis under which this makes sense. Uh, as one of many reasons, and it's the one where we have legal rationale or legal authority to act, then like just do it there. Is kind of my feeling, um. I I think the, the other thing I'm still just wrestling with here is, uh. The, when it comes to residential, which is gonna be pretty purely complaint based. Uh, you know, what what are what's realistic in terms of what we can actually accomplish uh here, and it might be. That we might literally be talking about like a dozen or a few dozen over time, if somebody complained about somebody and then that person has to change. Another piece of equipment, uh, you might get way, way farther with a set of incentives and broad outreach program, right? And just like a thousand households who mo- molds, you could have, you know, a thousand households who uh electrify and eliminate local air pollution. Uh, and have a a whole program and and campaign set up around it, um. Especially if you get some, you know, either, yeah, incentives from us or Duke Energy. So there's there's that question on the residential side of like, what's? You know, banning is one one avenue, but without a real uh systematic mechanism to actually switch people over. It might not accomplish much. I think where that's different is the commercial side, because. There's a limited number of commercial entities, right? And if you. Uh, set a noise based ban there, and you could say, look, anybody operating this equipment commercially, we're gonna require to. Get a permit showing us what their equipment is, and that it falls within our noise requirements as a city, like that's a a different. And then if we have legal authority there, that is a bit, you know, a big impact, but that's where. It's gonna be more contentious, probably.
Hi, um, Ash, I assume that we do not have the authority to require. Yard care companies to register like Princeton does.
So I think.
Cause they, in Princeton, they they actually have them register as, like getting a license to operate.
Yeah, and that was the the tricky thing I discovered in the issue of federal preemption is the the issue of uh insider. Um, mechanisms to enforce, which includes these type of licensing, um, so. The thought, I think that could be uh. A risk, um, in terms of if they're requiring folks to to get a license, um, to use this. Uh, I I'm not sure, um, if that would be preempted or not, um, but I think, um. It is a mechanism that could be used, you know, outside of outside of that issue, it's a mechanism that could be used, that could be put in code to to track. Users and the folks who believe to, um, register and give them the incentive. Um, information on how to switch, um, so I think that's kind of an implementation question in terms of. Um, if you wanted to go with a regime, um, that had a war to do with, you know, get folks. Uh, uh. Yeah, license, uh, or some sort of way to to track that versus, um, both saving and all the right band. Um, I do think, just off the top of my head, that it would be harder to justify a full out ban with. Just noise, um, but I'll I I need to do more research in the, um, but it, I think legally, it makes. Well, so to say something like, they're only being limited to this, that and not their noisy, they just have to go. But I need to check in further and and um do some more digging.
Oh, man.
Uh, just to note that this is essentially what we did with the towing uh ordinance, which is one of the first items of business we had this council term. We have in code author- a defined authorized towing service, um, and folks have to. Register in some way, do they not? Isn't that what we required as the mechanism of of implementation for uh reasonable towing? Fees? Ash, this predates your time at the council office, but this is, um. Uh, so we're in Title fifteen.
Things four point three two, see, I actually mentioned it to me, um, the non potential towing business.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not Title fifteen, it's the thing. What what is it?
Uh, Title four, four point three two.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, that would, it would definitely be the way to go if it's gonna have an effect, is to have them register. Otherwise, it it will be purely a complaint, and who knows? If it's ever gonna be effective.
Well, and that's also a way to do the education, the outreach and the incentives, you have to be able to.
The package, yeah.
Communicate with businesses.
Yeah.
This is what you're talking about, Matt?
Yeah. So I don't know if there's a particular basis that would allow us to require licensure in that. Context, but I mean, operating in the right of way, perhaps, I I don't know, but. Worth looking into, I suppose, uh, with respect to our ability to. Institute a a licensing. Scheme of some kind.
Yeah, I think that would help track the users and the workers who can target with instituted programs.
Okay, well. Well, good, I think we have now further direction, and a few more questions.
Always more questions.
But, um, yeah. It's definitely way forward still.
Do we have any public in this meeting to comment? Oh, sorry.
Uh, just a little bit thinking on next steps, uh, I I would, I would be interested in connecting with, um, Liz or runner, someone else from Duke. Uh, if we wanted to have like a committee member or two designated to do that, I'd be happy to. To work on that with with Sean or or otherwise, or happy for someone else to do it too, it doesn't really matter, but I think a conversation with them is warranted about how. If there are, if they could, if they're interested in helping to manage or incentivize uh equipment electrification in some way. Uh, through rebates or just even even research, I think their fleet management, uh, or fleet transition, like, uh. Assistance program, like, is that's part of it, it's it's scoping like performance and costs and things like that of equipment. To replace, so anyway, I think I think it's timely that we should, we should connect with them about this.
Sean, could you just look into the matter generally speaking to?
Sure.
Like federal grants or. Probably not state, but. You know, private. Organizations that might provide money.
Sure, I don't think there's anything through the I R A now, is there?
Not that I'm aware of, but that's a little outside my my space.
Is this? Oh, that the soon meetings ending.
And that, so do you want me to sit at the meeting with Liz to talk about this?
Uh, yeah, if if uh folks in the committee are are um open to to me joining on. On behalf, or if somebody else would like to join, I'd I'd love to to have a conversation, and if you don't mind looking me and Sean, uh, in outreach, that'd be great.
Thanks, Matt, for offering that.
Thank you, yeah.
That's a great idea. Uh, Ash, is there anything else that we need to cover this evening?
Uh, someone mentioned public, uh, we did get a message from someone, um, from the the public. Who said, I believe their their screen name is Eric, um, who said these is that my violation, and I'll go as by a factory facility. There there are numerous public, um, there there is a public comment time on this agenda, and that we wanted to open it up at this time.
Sure, are we, we're pretty much done, so why don't we see if we, is Eric still here?
Yes, Eric has, I think, that file.
Come run it out.
Okay, audio here, Derek, okay, thank you very much.
Good evening. Uh, I I apologize for joining late, I didn't realize this was gonna be a topic of discussion at this meeting, but, um. So I I, if possible, I'd like to get a copy of the meeting recording. Um, but my question is, so if, and this is an important topic, I think it it illuminates money, uh, you know. It's some very important.
I think it, it illuminates money, uh, you know, it's some very important uh, topics of discussion. But my question specifically is, so if noise detected at the property line and polluting air emissions are legally sound terms relating to regulation of gas-powered blowers, how are the same criteria applicable in regard to regulating permitted use of zone properties or mobile facilities like food trucks? Specifically, if it is, if it is reasonable to regulate gas-powered blowers, is it also reasonable to apply the same criteria in an unbiased manner to a factory facility? And I think you're all aware of the basis for my, my question. So I'd like for you, if you possible, to address this. I'm sorry that, uh, Ms. Kate is no longer here. It would have been helpful to have her, uh, clarify this, but, um, I look forward to having these questions clarified. Thank you.
Eric, uh, yeah, I think she would say it's on the basis of reasonable the, the noise being of a reasonable nature. Um, is someone else on? And so.
Yeah, part of the reasonable, uh, as Kate, as, uh, as Kate mentioned, um, is that it has negative impacts on a broad uh, swath of people, like numerous people, a whole sector of people. And, um, in the case of Carlisle, we have not had evidence of that. We've had hearsay of that and we have reached out again to the people who responded in January of this year to Dee LaRosa's email, um, that went out to the Elm Heights and the Brighton Park neighborhood list. And so we have followed up, council staff has kind of followed up with them. Um, and to that, we only got, I think, two responses. But, um, yeah, I mean, we would have to actually get complaints on record from multiple people. And then in addition to, to that aspect of reasonableness, um, I think there's also the question of, um, the the decibels, I mean, the, the how much it bothers people or how much it impacts people, you know? Could be a small impact, it could have a big impact. And so somewhere in there is this reasonable thing. That's as far as I've gotten, as far as the, the legal advice. Um, so, but we haven't forgotten about Carlisle, um. I, uh, was gonna actually talk to Dave about that separately.
Well, clearly we can, if we were to take a decibel meter and measure Carlisle at the property line, it probably would hardly even register. So it is really a matter of measurement and harm to be established as well as, yeah, and, and in our case, I guess the standard is, uh, is reasonableness because the, the metrics have been dropped. The, the decimal levels have been dropped. And whether we want to, you know, amend the code to address that is something that, yeah, I, you, you probably have some ideas. So Eric, I, you know, it, yeah, that's, I think they're, they're, they're similar but different, obviously. What else to say? Matt, you have a pity?
No, I don't have more to add.
Okay.
Any other public comment?
No one else have, you know, raised every discussion and chat from the one access to the recordings, like, I gave you some information.
Okay, well, I guess if we're done, then let's adjourn.
What's, um, are we?
You wanna set a time and a date for the next meeting? Should we do that before we adjourn?
Yeah, I mean, if you think, well, we're gonna have another meeting this year or?
We could in, um, in a, in a early December, perhaps, after ballot and, and after Thanksgiving or our break. Um. We've been having one Monday, so. Or Tuesday, I can't remember, but Monday nights great for me. But does it work for others?
That's usually fine for me. Matt, if it comes up, Mondays will work for me up until January, then I'll start teaching a evening class at IU Mondays and Mondays.
Is is there a Monday, December seventh, December month?
That is a Thursday.
Oh, sorry.
December fourth, fourth of the month.
Oh, eleventh, um, any preference, fourth or eleventh? Do you do the fourth?
Eleventh might allow more time for, uh, possibly having a, a meeting with Liz Erwin at Cook and possibly having more info from Aim or Creed Devol.
It'll also get you more handed to do more research and draft something different.
Okay, so let's do December eleventh.
Okay, six thirty?
Yeah.
Six thirty, sorry.
Good for you, Sean, six thirty? Okay, great. Thanks for touching that, Isabel. Okay. Let's adjourn.